Now, because the machine went on automatic pilot at five o'clock. It's five after five, we're gonna call the planning board meeting to order. And I hope you all have the agenda. We're missing Patty tonight, or we'll try to muddle through. This meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded for broadcast at a later date on the channels for the town, and also it goes up on YouTube. First order of business is our vacancy.
Ah ha.
Second order of business. The first order of business was a good shot on the fly.
Sorry.
It's fair.
You guys asked me to show you the letter before I sent it over to the selectmen regarding the vacancy. I couldn't make it any easier. It says, "Dear Select Board, a vacancy exists on the planning board." Period. Attached please find the town administrator's Gmail dated August thirty first, I'm sorry, July thirty first, two thousand and eighteen, with attachment regarding filling that vacancy. Thank you, Tom Robinson, Planning Board Chair. And I think you're familiar with Ryan's email, because he sent it. And attached to his email was the chapter forty-one law about how to do it. And we're following that to the letter. So I'll get this to, I have a copy for Patty for our records, and I'll get this to the selectmen. Second order of business is the meeting minutes from August first. And Patty sent them out. I asked for them in Word, and I I had some pretty significant track change, changes. Do we wanna go over these, or? Now, we can, I can make copies and
Yeah.
What we're gonna do is kill a few minutes until Dean shows up. And this is a wonderful way to do it.
Oh, okay.
Let me go make-
Shouldn't Francois be sitting up with us, isn't he on the board now?
No, I don't think he, he does sit with us.
And they ask why? Well, you said it yourself, Francois, a couple meetings ago, you said you're unofficial.
Oh, I am official, I've already been sworn in.
Well, we're not, I'm not going to recognize you, because I believe the Select Boards did not follow the law.
I beg your pardon?
And I'll say it again.
Yes, because I'd, I'd, I'd like to make sure that this is heard, and that we can record it properly.
I'll be glad to hear.
Thank you.
I mean, I'd be glad to speak as loud as possible.
Thank you.
Now, the Chair is not gonna recognize Francois, and invite him to the table. He can certainly attend as a citizen, as he has in the past few minutes, last few meetings. And I believe the process by which a alternative member, the alternate member is appointed, was not properly followed.
Okay.
Uh, what was I doing?
Making copies of the minutes. I believe that's what you were heading to do.
Yes, I'm over here.
I apologize.
Good evening.
There was an accident on Route two.
That's where the center pile was.
The whole pile?
Yep. I wasted a lot of paper today.
Excuse me?
I wasted a lot of paper today.
That's too bad. I like electronics.
You weren't running, were you?
I got out, traffic was so bad, I just dropped.
Hey, you, thank you, sir. You, you guys were awful quick about the runoff on Adams Road. Did you pass this?
I don't like this. Yeah.
Was it bad?
Tom, did you do a different print? Just so I can, 'cause yours was highlighted in red. So I'm just trying to, I don't know, I'm just trying to decipher.
You can do color, I think.
Well, what I did-
So is it like that font?
When you were down that hill and you take the time, the sun, and some people would just stop. And the people behind them are going sixty-seven.
All right. All right, let me, I'll just read it to everybody, I'll read it out loud, and I will say what's deleted and what's inserted. And I think it will come clear, because it's, it's all there. Members present, Thomas Robinson, Kendall Daly, Craig Bossino, Bill Holmans. Deleted associate member Francois Steiger. Others attend, other attendees, Ed Blanchard, Francois Steiger, Louisa Daring, Carrie Schroyer, and Dean Smith. Six thirty-one, call to order. The meeting is being digitally recorded, then rebroadcast, or broadcasted live, and, well, no, I'll read it literally. The, the meeting is being digitally recorded and broadcasted. Discussion, regarding Board vacancies and Tom Brecko's resignation, Tom Robinson will be Chair, since he was elected Vice Chair in the first meeting this year. In accordance with R. McLean's memo regarding vacancies, Robinson will present a letter regarding the planning board vacancy to the Select Board. July eleventh, planning board meeting minutes were reviewed and accepted without any changes. Topic, one, Borrego Solar, one forty-seven Williamsville Road. Dean Smith from Borrego Solar met with the planning board to discuss the status of one forty-seven Williamsville Road solar project. He presented the details of changes. I deleted the words "a new plan detailing," so details of changes being made to the site. Dean explained that Borrego Solar would like to add energy storage battery system, N energy storage battery system. The battery module would be approximately as large as a shipping container, there would be two of them. They are located far enough away from the property lines that it should not be concerned. These batteries even store extra energy and then transmit it to the distribution system. These batteries come with cooling and fire suppression, dry powder systems, and our local first responders would be trained on this in case there are any problems that arise on the site. D. Smith recommends the decommissioning fee not be changed, because while the battery modules are an addition, there are fewer solar modules at the site, a reduction netting out a very small change, if any, to the decommissioning cost. Environmental concerns were discussed, and no further impact would be seen from adding these batteries. Stormwater runoff remains unchanged, for example. The footprint or fenced area is unchanged, the solar energy collection capability and AC electricity produced remain unchanged. Even though this is a minor change, the planning board still felt that the changes should be reviewed by our agent. Places and Associates before the changes were approved by the Board, and I wrote down "considered." A question regarding failover, is that the right term, failover? I guess no one's listening, it's all right. A question regarding failover and single-point failure was brought up by Dean, up to Dean Smith by Francois Steiger. Dean stated that redundancy is built in by their planners, and all hazmat requirements are met. This is currently the only modification presented by Borrego for the Williamsville site. A motion was made by the Board to recognize the changes as minor. Motion, Kendall, Tom seconded. Yes, Tom and Kendall, no, Craig Bossino and Bill Holmans. After discussion, it was agreed that the minor changes would be reviewed and reported upon by William Murray of Places and Associates. Dean will reach out to Places and fund, and fund and coordinate the review of the changes. The planning board will meet on August twentieth to receive the report if available. Ed Blanchard asked that the structure of over a hundred square feet requires a building permit. Dean replied, "Yes, everything is incorporated into the building permit when the building's permit application is presented to the town for all required permits." Gardner Road solar project site, I'm sorry, new topic, Borrego Solar at Gardner Road. Gardner Road solar project site update and transfer of ownership was discussed. Attorneys are still discussing ownership transfer and transfer of decommissioning monies in, monies is all set before transfer of funds happens. Borrego is still responsible for the site currently, and this is true until sign-off is completed. Bill Murray of Places has requested a final walkthrough of the site be scheduled for the week of August sixth to identify anything required as far as the town is concerned. A discussion of breaking the activity into two parts, one, finalizing the physical site, and two, preparing the paperwork for the final transfer of ownership. Planning Board will concentrate on securing the physical location first, with this being a priority, and working with Bill Murray of Places Associates. Places will present the report to the planning board. There may currently be funds on deposit with the town, this needs to be researched and will be discussed at a future meeting. Robinson stated that the town can initiate a discussion regarding the pilot program, but the town can't complete the discussion until the planning board gives approval. Seven forty, we adjourn. That was my comments, if you guys have comments. Now, remember, all the, much, much of this is Patty's original work, I was, I was adding to it.
Uh, one request, Tom.
Yes, sir.
If at all possible, just, could you email this to us beforehand?
Yes, I, I should've, and I, I thought it was, uh, well, I thought you guys would also come in with comments. Any, any comments? Because the emails go both ways.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I felt, I mean, you just went more thorough than Patty had it, so, I mean, it's all right with me.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay, then I have a motion to accept them and move them along, and I will in the future.
The motion to accept is preserved.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you very much, guys. Next on the agenda is, oh, I'm running out of saliva. Gardner Road solar project, Places Associates report. Dean, you're up, and Bill, you're up. Everybody have four documents in front of them? One is this site visit report from August sixth. The second one is a report from Places and Associates regarding the overview of the project from a paperwork point of view. The next one is a punch list, and the next one deals with the next agenda item, one forty-seven.
So I can make it go rank.
So, thank you for your time this evening, gentlemen. Dean Smith from Borrego Solar. We did receive the correspondence from Bill. Looking at the items that, that he's got listed here, I believe we have everything except for the transfer of the bond, that's still with the attorneys right now.
As-built plan?
The as-built plan was provided with the gen, the permission to generate.
Certificate, okay, my bad.
Well, when I, I just wanted to hold everything until I had all of the documents that you were requesting. We do have the recorded driveway easement, the operation and maintenance document, as-built plan. Site signage, we'll have to get that taken care of with the other onsite items. So, I, I don't see anything there that is problematic for us, aside from the fact that we're waiting for the final paperwork on the transfer of the bond. As the town wanted to keep the monies on deposit in the town accounts, the buyer's gonna have to reimburse Borrego, and they wanna make sure that everything is tied up properly from a legal standpoint as far as that notice goes, before they reimburse those monies to us. So, I, I don't think there's anything major outstanding there. I understand that, that the Board can't really take any final action until all of these items are complete, so when we have that, we'll submit a, a full package with copies to, to Places, so that they've got a complete file on everything as well.
I agree.
Bill, you wrote the report.
Yes, sir.
You got anything else to add to?
Just that there's, I, I've spoken with their construction guy and Dean. Two small things onsite, the, the access road where it goes right up the hill, you can see it from Gardner Road, has washed out and gullyed. And I recommend they put water bars, which are bars perpendicular to the path of travel, to get, so that instead of the water running all the way down the hill, it hits a water bar and goes off to the side, so you don't get erosion velocities. And then on-
Is a water bar a thing you buy at the hardware store, or is that just a ditch?
It's just a ditch. And it has to be a shallow ditch, so you can drive up it, and then, and I show you a picture of the gully. And then on the following page, at the low point, there's a washout. They have about a three-foot berm made out of the, the chips, and just washed out, it hasn't impacted a wetland. So, we're well in time. If they just take a dump truck and dump some crushed stone in there, that'll slow it down, and I'm quite sure over time, these chips will decompose, start growing things as they already are. So from a construction standpoint, those are the only two things. I did mention to the electrical inspector that we saw a box was missing, one of the electrical boxes, and their construction guy said that they had a fault on it, and they pulled it off, and they're trying to get it replaced. And that is truly an issue between the electrical inspector and, and Borrego, I don't, but it does, you know, it's not there. The, the construction is not yet complete, as far as I'm concerned.
I think it was safe, it was all safe-ended and wrapped and everything, but no box.
And the, our construction guys are in direct contact with the electrical inspector about that, so it should be resolved very, very quickly. All of Bill's comments are forwarded on to the construction people as well, so they've, they've got the information.
Yeah, there's nothing imperative, there's nothing, no, no failures of any system that I'm aware of, meaning site-wise. And this is just the paper chase, and if Dean's gonna package it, then hopefully we have one meeting in front of you. I did, but I, I didn't copy the Board, but I sent it to Dean and the Chairman. I've given Borrego what I think my fees would be. It's two thousand dollars for this meeting, plus my inspection, plus a follow-on inspection and report for Gardner Road.
I have that here.
And though that check's been requested, as well as the check to cover the Williamsville Road.
And I only gave it to him on Friday, so I can't-
Well, it's certainly been requested by us, but what do you mean by it's been requested?
It's been requested internally, yeah. It has to be issued by our California office. I should have it in hand tomorrow.
And then what do you do with it?
I wanted to receive it at our office, so that I could put a transmitter on with it, so that your treasurer would have very clear indication of what the monies were for, and, and be able to deposit them appropriately.
You're in luck this week. Our meeting is Monday, today, and our clerk is here through Wednesday. So if you get it tomorrow, and then turn it around, and overnight it to us, we'll have it Wednesday, and we can process it. We'd like to process it before we go too far with you.
I won't have an invoice out that quick, so.
All right, well, that would be very helpful. Then, that's Gardner Road. But there's also a check for the-
Questions from the on Gardner Road?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. It's pretty straightforward, pretty well packaged. The colored chart that I prepared is simply, early on, for the benefit of our former building inspector, Mr. Brandt, I prepared this chart so that he could just go through a checklist, and it made it pretty easy for me as well, so that's why I just color-coded it and printed it up.
What does red mean?
Red means it's outstanding, green means it's nothing, yellow means we're working on it, and the white is really not applicable.
I think some of the red is just that Places wasn't copied on some of that.
Or I missed it.
Some of it was just submitted with the building permit application, some of it was submitted with the request to place, or to generate power, so for our certificate to generate. But we'll include a full package and, and a full copy for Places, so that everything is, is clear, that it's been provided.
I know you made this easy, you said.
So I said.
But that was for somebody else. I'm looking across at seven forty-five.
My cover letter also addresses it by number on the permit.
Well, I see all the boxes are checked. Why is it still red?
That's the, that's the original checklist, to indicate whose responsibility it is throughout the project. The color is simply, red indicates, in my opinion, it's an outstanding item, green indicates it's a closed item.
All right, so these Xs, like this one has a X missing. Does it matter?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, well, you've got some system worked out, as long as the building inspector and you are gonna get along on it, and Dean understands what it means.
This was the previous building inspector, and honestly, I don't think he used it, so.
I can see why. No, I'm only kidding, but you know what you have to do to satisfy him, okay?
And his letter's very clear in the outline, so I just wanna make sure that I have a complete package, all, altogether, not piecemeal, so that you're, you're wondering that one thing comes at one time, and
It's hard to keep track of, but I only, I only see a half a dozen items here, so.
Yeah, I'd rather have a complete package.
Seven, I guess. Anybody got any concerns with this, or anybody can't tell where the picture's being taken of, or something? So those three documents will go to Patty. And the course of action's clear. Okay, thank you, Bill.
I take yours.
Next topic's one forty-seven. Williamsville, everybody get a chance to read Bill's August sixteenth memo. You wanna take a minute?
Oh, I read it already. I read it.
Bill? You wanna, eh, take your time?
So in your opinion, the batteries are not hazardous whatsoever?
I would say that they represent a minimalistic hazard of any kind, yeah.
So they dealt with the large battery systems in the past, and they were very hazardous, and that's a big concern.
These are like in Civics and, you know, Priuses, it's a dry lithium. And the only liquid is the refrigerant, correct me if I'm wrong. And it's a dry fire suppression system contained within, it's a shipping container with batteries in it.
It doesn't create any type of hazards, environment, if it does activate, on the batteries?
No.
The dry chemical system?
No, although it's a, it's a hazard on entry for the firemen. But in theory, if the, if the fire suppression system goes off, correct me if I'm wrong, it's gonna trigger a cascade alarm system, probably through an operations, not a fire alarm. And then by the time the firemen get there, the system would have discharged, the, the fuses would have popped, and that would have settled to the ground, so it would be far, far less than a hazard. And our fire department, they, they owe, both on Gardner Road and on this project as part of the conditions, they have to walk the fire department through the completed project, and they have to show them where the shut-offs are, and they have to direct them. They have the obligation to train our fire department, and the chief is present usually at, at all of those, so that they know what their responses are supposed to be and where they could, because we don't want them, just going into a solar field.
Right, right. My, my, my concern is the batteries, and the chemicals, and the other thing, is there any, any hazardous considerations other than the batteries that they need to look at, if they had to respond there?
We didn't, we didn't see any, and so what we did was we called other towns that, that Borrego, in fact, not other vendors, Borrego is doing this in. And in each and every case, they considered it, Borrego is proposing them as new projects now, and requested minor modifications in some of the other towns. And in each and every case, they said, their engineers reviewed it, and their fire departments reviewed it, and they considered it, but, to be a minor change. And two of the communities said it's, it's the electrical inspector's responsibility, it's an electrical component, no different than a transformer, or switch station, or, or AC/DC transformer type of thing.
Okay.
So we didn't, you know, we did online to see if we could, we actually found a really good source, and I did give you the the website, cleanegroup.org, about how these things work, and whether they constitute an environmental hazard. It's a hundred and fifty-page document, and they have a ten-page abbreviation.
Right.
And, as I said, we did call around, and we did our own online research, and we didn't find any, any red flags. Because lithium batteries are so standard, yeah, yeah, and there's no liquid, it's not an acid battery, so that-
And it is in a NEMA rated structure, so there's containment there as well.
Okay.
And then I went into assessing the bond, if I may continue.
Oh, well, yeah, it's moving right along through the letter here.
Uh, yeah.
Are we satisfied with the technological stuff, before we move into the financial stuff, I guess?
So, the issue that we have always said, number one, we say, we advise our clients, our community clients, that you should not account for recycling as part of the bonding, because there's no, that, we know there's gonna be a glut of solar panels in twenty-plus or minus years. They may or may not have a recycle value. Yes, I believe that they will, but I don't think that we should assume it. So when we developed the bond, that's what we did. In this case, I went round and round, internal and with, with our engineers, and we agree with Borrego. The problem with decommissioning is taking the solar panels apart, and taking the stanchions out of the ground or off the ground, and disassembling. These things, they disassemble, click, 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 four or five connections, and they go on a flatbed, and off they go. So, we do agree that, that the change in the number of panels, the reduction of the number of panels, which are very difficult to disassemble versus these two, two trailers is indistinguishable, and we don't think it impacts the bond.
Bill, you weren't here for the, all the hearings, but, you know those things, they sell them about this long, and they're a corkscrew, and you put them in the ground, it'll tie your dog down?
Yep.
Well, these are just like that, only bigger.
Right.
And that's what they're using for anchors. So they screw in, screw out. These are not like sonotubes and-
So it's not cemented, and they're off?
No, or driven, they're either that or driven, and, and the issue is, you can see in the foreseeable future that maybe the panels and the aluminum stanchions are worth something, but to pull those things out of the ground, to undo them takes a piece of machinery and quite a bit of work. And that's what we're protecting the town and the property owner against. Somebody can come in and decommission by stripping it clean and leaving these drill posts in the ground. And that's what we, you know, we wanna protect against all the way through.
Okay.
So when Borrego or whomever leaves this site, we have a clear meta that doesn't have stuff-
Right.
-hazards.
And that's, that's the intent of the decommissioning plan that we provided to the town, is to return the site to as close of a, of a pre-development status as possible. So, those screws just come, they, they come out the opposite way of what they went in, so our estimate had included labor to do that, disassemble the, the racks, and take it all up to, to the transfer station. Bill's estimate was based on, again, pulling other local towns, and seeing what other, other places were requiring for bonds.
But there's less of them now.
There are less, quite a few less modules, because there's a more efficient module available now than there was when we first permitted.
And each module is a little environmentally better, but you're not counting on any recyclability, so I guess that really doesn't matter, but they're moving in the right direction.
Right, so it wouldn't matter from that standpoint, but from an overall standpoint, yes, they get a higher rating from, on the, on the solar scorecard, the hung on modules that we have proposed now.
But they still get a zero on environmental. And the environmental address is whether they have heavy metals as part of the component. And a zero indicates, doesn't indicate that it's a, it's a bad panel. It indicates they probably didn't submit information to the reviewing agency. And I could not find any information online on the composite of these, other than it's a pretty good name, and they're in the top ten.
And our manufacturers have eliminated, there were spot welds that were heavy metals that, that were a concern before, but they've eliminated that from their procedures, their manufacturing procedures, so it's, it's just that the, the rating agency didn't have that information.
Summary?
Not a big change.
A minor change.
Correct.
Okay, well, then that falls within the confines or the purview of the existing permit, and the Board need to take no further action. So you guys can go forward with this, just like, there's probably gonna be a hundred other minor changes as we go down the road, but no board actions required.
And there, there will be a full building permit application and review by-
I have one question. Would this impact the power agreement? Because you'd be making more money off the electricity off of the, more than the initial agreement.
I, I know that-
Because I sat through a whole process.
Well, let's be careful here. It's not the purview of the board. You said last time that the assessors do that. Now, I know you sit in both seats.
No, no, I'm not an assessor anymore.
Oh, I thought you were.
No, no, I just, that experience, I just wanted to put that out there. Is that part of the process? Should we send this over to the board of assessors and the selectmen to review?
Well, they they will get all this information.
They do.
Oh, yes, yes. If you wish. I thought I had it done.
He's here.
Yeah, introduce yourself, please. I stepped I stepped on your toes. Come on up, the microphones pick you up.
Zach Farquhar is developer with Borrego on the project, so I've been in touch with both the town administrator as well as the regional assessor, Diane. And we've been working on the proposed pilot rate. Generally with this board, we don't approach the assessors until after the approval.
Right, okay, I just wanted to mention it.
Yep, of course, and specifically in this case, the way the battery is being used is it's AC coupled, meaning it's on the grid side of our inverters. Which ultimately means that no more kilowatt hours will flow to the grid than previous and in effect, less. Because you lose some kilowatts in the round trip efficiency of the kilowatts being produced at the array, going through the inverters, being stored in the battery and then exported to the grid. What it essentially does is it allows us more flexibility on the production time and that's meant to improve grid stability. Because of the um intermittency issues inherent to distributed generation. So it's more of a liability improvement and less of a profitability improvement. If the battery is on the DC side, you'd be correct, but on the AC, an AC coupled solution is less to do with making more money or more kilowatt hours and more to do with a more stable system, a more stable grid that it feeds.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, so you charge these batteries with AC?
From the red.
I charge my my car batteries with AC, a little one twenty volt.
Basically, there's a little switch that panels, inverters, to the battery, the battery gets full, ding, goes right right out to the grid. And then at the end of the day, that battery, once the solar stops producing, it switches back the other way and the battery exports to the grid. So it's the same amount of kilowatt hours stretched, I think it's a two hour battery, so instead of, let's say, producing from eight to six, a ten hour day, it's now a twelve hour day. And what happens is everyone gets home from work right around five or six o'clock, right, and they flip on their ACs and their ovens and their lights and their TVs. And right as the sun's going down. So the grid actually has a hard time ramping up because traditional power plants take a long time to turn on. So what we can effectively do is just with the switch of a of a simple controller, that battery can produce, can send more energy to the grid for those two hours. And that's the scary, that's the scary time for the utilities because they're saying, oh, man, if that, if a rainstorm comes through early at four o'clock, we lose four hours. It's gonna take us a while to ramp up our natural gas peak plant and they have to ramp up faster. It's like slamming down the accelerator on your truck, right? Your gas mileage goes way down, cost of electricity goes up.
Just ask a question with her, is that, is it fair to say that at this point in time, any electricity that is produced that is not going to the grid here for its loss by you?
Need power.
So for example, if what what I heard from last time that that I was here, if you're producing excess energy that the grid cannot absorb at this point in time, that energy for all intents and purposes is not producing a revenue for you, is that correct?
Um, it would be correct if there was ever a scenario where the electricity we produced was not needed by the grid.
Correct, and that and that could happen, right?
I don't think so, no. The the systems are small enough compared to the total load on the grid that the kilowatts will be dispersed throughout the entire area.
So you're doing this here for the purposes of equalizing it for the electric company that receives the the power?
It's like a mini power plant, PRX port to national grid who distribute it, distributes it throughout their utility service territory.
Correct, and so, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to validate what I have just heard from you and that is that, and it's also for the public to understand that at this point in time, all the electricity that is produced is generating revenue for Borrego, is that correct? Okay, so thank you.
Okay, um, I think that wraps it up. You can go forth and. Oh, uh, one other thing, though, that's required by the permit is that all this stuff appear on your as-built drawings.
Yes, of course.
And I gave them a fee for this work as well.
Yes, and that check, that check will also be forwarded.
Yes, you did. All right, we need that. And then I, my job is to work with accounting to see where that goes properly.
That's why, that's why I wanted it to come to me first, so that I could put a detailed transmitter on it and make it make it clear what the purpose was.
There's been some confusion. Yeah, yeah. Okay, then, um, I gotta thank you, Bill, for doing it in such a short period of time and doing it so thoroughly and thanks for the support. Thanks for dropping by, Zach. No problem.
Hey, gentlemen, thank you, Bill.
Pleasure.
We had a, I got one more thing. I gotta keep track of all our little assignments, like you're the representative of the select. And I think next time I'm gonna come in with a list of who's doing what and we'll just vote the list. And then as the year goes on, that list might get revised and we'll have to rebook the list or whatever we have to do. That's the only other piece of business I'm, oh, no, there's one more. In September, I intend to ask you guys to turn in a draft of your reports. About three meeting minutes ago, uh, three meeting agendas ago, we had some stuff from Tom Bradco, like gravel pits and scenic roads and time to hand in at least a draft, you know, some pictures.
Well, I'm okay with the gravel pits. I went there once with Tom and I reviewed the regulations, but I haven't gone any further.
Well, we need a little mini report, just something.
Report on what, though, Tom?
What'd you see? Take a picture of the pile of the illegally dumped stuff?
That was dumped about fifteen years ago, yeah.
Well, it doesn't matter how old it is, it's still there.
Right, right.
Appropriately, but make, my point is the report should make it so that we don't have to go look. If you guys go look, you represent our eyeballs. Tell us what you saw. Pictures are great, everybody's carrying around a camera anyway, so. Just try, you know, a little purpose of the report, what you found and what we're gonna do. Like a science experiment in seventh grade, you know, objectives, findings, conclusions, recommendations and pictures. So, um, we are interrupting Senator Gobie's representative. We're taking their table.
They're supposed to be there?
Well, he just stepped into the senior office. I think he's okay, but um, and then we have the six thirty meeting. We should probably talk about that. That meeting was called for what really became two or three reasons, but basically it's to hear the finance committee gentleman, Mr. Lerner, present the um, what I think is a PowerPoint presentation on sources and uses of revenue. Where we get, how we tax things and how we spend things. And I I think it's really a good presentation. We can go there, we can sit there as citizens. We can't discuss things that are planning board, but we can sit there just like anybody else and enjoy the show. I think it will be a very good discussion. I encourage you to attend if you can.
Is it gonna be recorded?
I hope so, because it wasn't recorded the last time. I can't imagine it not being recorded.
I thought we were going in to present the letter also.
Oh, I will. Well, we don't have to present the letter. I could, I could put that in the envelope.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's good. I gotta sign it and I was gonna go over to Patty and put have their little planning board letterhead thing on it, you know. She's gonna be there till eight, so I think I can catch her. So, um, the September meeting, reports, some other stuff, I'll come up with an agenda. If you guys have agenda items, flip them to me by email and we'll try to formulate a. I think it's the fifth, it'll be a Wednesday, unlike this week.
Right.
But you guys knew about this because we planned this irregular meeting.
I thought this was the last meeting, I thought.
Yeah, we wanted to sneak it in before the end of the thirty day period.
The minute meeting, it was there, so we talked about that. So that's the first Wednesday of the Labor Day.
So I'm gonna run over to Patty with my little letter and wrap it up unless anybody has anything.
Uh, I got a few items.
Good.
So technically, we're in old business, but I, how, um, yeller, Tom, we were kinda like on, um, everybody was seeing every correspondence whatsoever type of deal. What happened with that? Because I noticed that went away.
Well, um.
And I don't know if it's just oversight from people.
Well, I'm the person mostly, or you guys too, but um. Let me think about that a little bit. Um, I'm I'm kind of more in the Vince um mode. Vince didn't do that and and in some ways, I think it kinda raises the chaos. If you send out emails and everybody has a question on the email, then we got five responses and pretty soon we're deliberating and I don't wanna go there from an open meeting law point of view.
I just think it's knowledge of one is knowledge of all is good for a lot of things and we don't have to deliberate on it. You just get the information, you read it.
All right, let me let me try to do better on that.
At least everybody knows about it.
Let me try to do better on it.
I just feel like everybody, everybody would be coming to the meetings more knowledgeable and we could cut out a lot of wasted time sitting here trying to listen to stuff that was already sending emails to specific people or.
Sure, example of the meeting minutes. I should have sent that out.
But I I just think, and then you can't come, like all the stuff that Tom was working on is, that we were talking about and supposed to work on it, it stopped.
Well, I'm gonna dredge that back up, as I said, in September, you guys have some reports.
But the thing is, all that information and that's, he's gone now, so if we can't get a hold of that, it's like.
No, he has a public records responsibility. Um, that can't be shunned.
Right, so how do we go about getting the information? Because he's got a lot of information on the gravel pits, I'd like to.
Give me a list of what, well, he shouldn't have anything at home on the gravel pits.
And I don't know, I haven't talked.
We should have that all over here.
I was at at the very beginning process of that and just talked to him once and went out once with him.
Why don't you ask him?
Well, I didn't wanna overstep anything, so.
Why don't you ask him, hey, give me all the stuff on the gravel pits?
Okay.
And see what he's got.
All right.
He can't just put that in the trash can. That's public documents.
No, I know you can't. Do you have any good knowledge of the past history of the gravel pits and what's going on? You folks have been in a lot longer than I have.
I think we got a pretty good feel for it. The Marinelli thing was a year.
Where can I go to find all of this so I can read it and disseminate it?
Patty has done a pretty good job on one drawer. She says all the special permits are in one drawer. And that, like Marinelli's decision should be in there. Cattisto, um, Brown never came in with a application. Fletcher never came in with an application. Uh, we had to go around with the man who owns Raita Ranch. I I believe it is all in there.
Okay.
It's it's not fun reading, Bill.
Oh.
It's it's, but please avail yourself of it, at least on the flip through thing, you know, and maybe the 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 most recent documents. Help yourself, knock yourself out.
I just wanna add a little bit of better understanding, so.
Yes.
I think there's a lot to it, so.
We don't have any gravel pit applications in front of us, so.
Which is good.
I think it is.
Yeah. It's unfortunate that nobody's hauling out of those pits because the towns lost a lot of revenue, but they could have made the town could have made more revenue if there's more gravel to come out of it.
Taxes go down every time they take out a truck because it's a depletion. There's there's not much in it for the town.
For the town?
You gotta put a couple million dollars into pit real road and safety issues. You know, you've sat through all that stuff on the Marinelli one year long, maybe a year and a half long.
Okay.
Well, um.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Uh, hold on, I still got more also. Um, just, I don't wanna let the Francois thing just die that quickly. Where, what law are you thinking or do, I don't know what the right word is, but what law are you saying the selectmen broke?
Well, I'd have to refer back, I don't have it with me. Tom's, Tom's letter. Tom's letter outlined it. His letter reads, his letter to.
That he sent to Ryan?
That he sent to Ryan, yeah. If you read those references, um, I believe it's a combination of the family of laws at the state level, forty or forty-one, and then a family of laws in our own charter and zoning laws. But I could be wrong. I'd have to read his letter again to nail it.
So may I ask, may I ask with regards to that? You are formulating your rejection of me being part of this committee based on something that somebody else has written, but without you researching that, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. What I said was I could not completely recall it as I sit here, because I don't have his letter in front of me. But when he sent his letter in, I read those laws.
Mm-hmm. And your understanding of the laws are that the select board did not fulfill their process? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. It will be.
It was master on a law forty A section nine. The chairman of the planning board may designate an associate member to sit on the board.
Correct.
And hope, hope it's on zoning by law seven point six.
Yeah.
Have you read them?
I have read them all. And my understanding is is that I have not only been appointed properly incorrectly, but I've also been sworn in. And so as a consequence of this here, there's obviously a disconnect between how you're reading the law versus how I'm reading the law.
Well, if you're gonna use the word consequence, there is no call for your attendance at the board unless there is a need for it in the case of a special permit.
Which this one happens to be.
No, 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 no. This special permit was issued three months ago.
You're working, you're working through the, you're, you're working on the Borrego aspects at this point in time.
No special permit on the table.
And I think that frankly, and for the record, I just wanna state that I want to let folks know that I do believe that you are postponing the appointment of an associate member uh without any good reason.
Well, let me make it very clear. There's no special permit consideration. Thank you. I'm going to adjourn or leave.
Uh, just one quick question. As, is the planning board requesting the lawyers for the town to look into this issue? Or, um, just where are we headed? What direction are we heading with this? That's all I wanna know. Like, is the lawyers looking into it? Have you requested the lawyers to look into it?
I've taken no action other than to read Tom's letter and say, I don't agree with what they did.
Okay, so so the planning board hasn't requested for the town's attorneys to look at it?
I have not.
Okay. That's all I got.
So I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Sorry.
Thank you very much, all the favor. This is not personal, this is just the way it is.